Taking those two. Taking those two and aligning the funding to the site opportunities. And of course, the reason why we're here is we want to continue a great partnership with City of Cloverdale and look for opportunities to do that. So I'm going to hand it over to Rob to review the development impact report.
All right, thank you, Jen. So just a quick summary of some of the big takeaways that we have from this document. And Superintendent McLean already referenced some of these points, but especially compared to what has been the case over recent history. There is a significantly higher pace of development expected to occur within the city of Cloverdale in the coming years. And that development is going to generate new students for the district. The district's current facilities, as we'll demonstrate with some detail, are largely undersized sites relying on older facilities. And in some cases, already with some enrollment impacts. So any additional students from development will just continue to exacerbate a lot of what the district is already working on. A big part of this is that the district has a large percentage of its classrooms that are in use that are 20-plus-year-old relocatables, which again, it's not that they aren't adequate to put kids in right now, but they're not meant to be long-term solutions. And so when we look at the district's capacity, we're really looking at it with just the permanent capacity and then what they can do right now, but they can't depend on being able to use indefinitely. And then the other one that we've already brought up is that when these sites were designed with the original permanent facilities, those ancillary facilities, the number of restrooms, the gymnasiums, the cafeteria spaces, the admin office spaces, were all sized with the assumption of enrollment that would fit in that original number of classrooms. As you add portable classrooms to boost how many students you can serve on the site, you're not boosting your ancillary facility sizes. And it begins complicating everything very quickly when that happens. So again, we'll get into some of the numbers on this. But again, a big part of this also is that even outside of the classroom capacities, the California Department of Education at the state level has a site-size guideline document that you can look up that uses the number of classrooms and the type of grade level served and the number of students to get an idea of how many acres that site should be. And the three main schools at Cloverdale USD are all undersized based on those guidelines. And I think one of the main points here is that absent the residential development, the district would have more options in terms of phasing some of those increasingly old portable classrooms out of use based on some of the demographic enrollment trends that we'll get into. But with the impact from development and those additional students, as we'll see, it's just going to continue putting strain on, or constraints rather, on the choices the district can make regarding some of its facilities. Okay, so a quick point, because we talked about this. So development is going to generate students. So how do we get a handle on that? And what's useful is, as I alluded, there has already been some development that has been going on. So we look at recently constructed units of different types. We really break things down into four categories. So your single-family detached homes, so you don't share a wall with any other family. And you typically have a yard and all of that. So any of those that are built, we look at the units. We look at how many current students are in those units and we get an average rate. And so looking at the table at the bottom, if we're just looking for the whole district, TK through 12th grade, that's transitional kindergarten, that's TK. .275, so for every 100 homes, you'd have about 27 and a half, so 27 to 28 students that you'd expect to see from those homes. So single-family attached, or again, these are for sale properties. But so townhomes, condominiums, something where you have at least one wall that you're sharing with another unit. And those tend to have smaller, if any, yards. And so we do tend to see lower rates of student generation there. They're not often as attractive to families with especially younger kids. But then multifamily, here we're talking more about rental apartments for the most part. And then lastly, if any sort of affordable or below-market-rate housing, as is the case in Cloverdale USD, is the case, I think literally in every district I've ever worked in, that you have a higher rate of student generation. This is where the families with school-aged children who are looking for a way to move into or stay in an area will largely utilize that availability of affordable housing if it's there. Here you see, just by chance, precisely one student per unit. So we did all of that detail. And then we looked at all of the development projects that are somewhere in the pipeline that we expect to be, have some chance of generating some students over this projection period of the next seven to 10 years. We have some other projects that you can look up online on the city's website that, from everything that we've talked with the city about and looked into, are probably not going to be built in that timeframe. So we've acknowledged them here. And because again, things change. So we want to show how many other units there are beyond the 525 we've identified here. But based on those student generation rates you just saw, with all of these projects that are listed above the total line. And I know at least some of these, since this report was published, are already under construction or even fully built. So but we were looking at those 525 units with average student generation rates based on our survey, that we would expect an additional 320 students from those.
Absolutely, and I think you made a good point is that this was based on our 2021 data. So as we continue to support the school district, the school district has, will continue to update this report. So just know that we do have a slide that discusses changes since that report was published.
Yep, yep. And then just a quick map, I mean, just so it's helpful to see a list, but then just seeing it on the map here, just so that each of those projects that was referenced. Again, we have a darker shading, the development that we expect to generate students, the lighter shading for other ones that are just in the monitor level. And in the blue are district properties that they own. We'll be getting into all of those a little bit later on. And so as Jen said, so since the report that was based on 2020/2021 data, we have the
We can't hear you.
No, we broke.
Jen, is your computer?
I keep talking for a moment.
Okay, now we'll hear you.
Okay, wonderful. So yeah, so the first big one out there is our little pop-up that our connection is unstable. So it used to be a problem, we'll troubleshoot, but for now, let's press on. So we do have those current year enrollments. We're very close to projected levels, though again, we haven't gotten into the bulk of that development coming online.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Hold on.
Yep, we'll be running back. With our visuals. Oh, no, that's a, that's a, see if I ever. That's just a little better at life. I would have this entire thing.
Memory.
From start to finish.
It's the typical life of Zoom, so it's okay, we're used to it.
Why do you not have a memory? Sorry.
So another thing, one thing that I will touch on real quick that was referenced in that report is at the state level, there's what's called universal transitional kindergarten. And since that report was published, we've gotten clarification. And now we know that this is going to be a four-year rollout. So starting this fall, and we'll show you some details on this in a moment, but through 2025, effectively, transitional kindergarten is going to grow from the program it originated as in 2012 and really become at a new grade level. The first year of two years of kindergarten that is available to all four-year-olds. So the district has to plan for this on top of everything else happening. And we just had a little bit more detail on the precise nature of that rollout that wasn't yet decided.
Absolutely. And I think what's really important about transitional kindergarten and full-day kindergarten or regular kindergarten classrooms from a school district's perspective, there are different type of space. So a relocatable classroom or portable, which is 960 square feet, isn't an adequate space per the state. So to house transitional kindergarten students or kindergarten students, we're looking at sizes of 1,350 square feet with a dedicated restroom, which definitely is a different, having a restroom included, costs a little bit more. So this is now an unfunded mandate from the state that is coming down the pipe to Cloverdale and all districts throughout the state of California.
Yep, and then it's a detailed point. But again, while we had the one particular 81-unit affordable housing project that was in amongst the station area downtown allotment of units, we just have a little bit more detail now on the phasing of that. And we will kind of adjust our projections accordingly with.
Absolutely. Continue to just keep our eye on any developments as the city continues.
Yeah, but as I said, this is a living document that will continue to be updated with regular check-ins on all these changing conditions on the ground.
Absolutely.
Yep, and so here's just a quick detail on how that transitional kindergarten program works. So we get a program that originally started when the state rolled back the kindergarten age from December to September for those students who formerly would have been eligible as those not-quite-five-year-olds, now all four-year-olds in the state. You see as just, you're kind of adding birth dates, but by 2025, 26, all four-year-olds who want to be in TK can do so. And so our projections here assume that the district's elementary site at Jefferson will be the one who will absorb that population. So here is, we've gone ahead and updated the enrollment projection to account for the current year enrollments. And again, for some of those changes to information, we now have on a phasing of certain projects. But what you really can see here is, of course, the bottom line total there in the gold definitely increasing from current levels. But then particularly, you see the portion of those who are the TK and kindergarten students, that very top line with the TK, definitely really increasing as you expand that program. So that, and then you can just kind of look at all, but you have increased numbers across the board at all three. So in this case, we are using the grade configuration currently employed by the district with the TK for students and Jefferson, fifth through eighth grade at Washington and the high school programs with nine through 12th graders. But increased enrollment across all levels. A lot of that is because of students generated from development.
Yep.
So again, we'll continue to check in on these. We're going to be, as we start getting early enrollments for next year and the TK and kindergarten enrollments are some of the biggest numbers there. If we can start getting a handle in the spring about how that will shape up for next fall. We should have by early 2022, another full year of birth data, which really goes into informing us about then four to five years down the road, how those kindergarten and TK cohorts might look just based on the number of children that there are in the district. And of course, just continuing to get updates on the pace of development and with a new year of students and some brand-new developments that were built once they're occupied and have students getting a sense for just looking at those student generation rates again. So all things that we're just continuing to do just as we go forward. So here's where we get into that kind of the real essential element of what we're looking at here. So you have the bars showing that projected enrollment that we were just looking at in a graphic format. And then you have those lines, one of which is the permanent capacity available in the district. And then you have with that gold line, the inclusion of all of those portable classrooms, which as we've already said, it's not that they don't provide some capacity now. It's that it really should not be the district's long-term plan for that capacity to be available. And so district-wide, you see that by next year, we are projecting there will be more students than the district has the permanent capacity to house. And then if we, as we start dicing this up by the different grade levels, we start seeing some even bigger takeaways. But we're just going to look at the, so we've included the site diagrams. So unfortunately, the aerials don't always keep up in real time with everything that's going on. But we have the new two-story classroom building that's going in there. Some of these, and that allow the district to get some of those portables out of this site. But there are still some left, and you see the ages on those. I mean, they all start with a Y.
Yep, so all the yellow buildings are your permanent buildings. And then the green are your relocatable or portable classrooms that are still in use. What I think is really great about this visual is really looking at what our permanent target capacity is. It aligns everything so that we can see. It also is important to understand at each site, like Superintendent McLean stated, the district is, has been a community partner and always looking for opportunities to allow the community access to their properties for facility use, sports, recreation, and all of that. And so at this site, at Jefferson, we know that we have the, this field here, and it is, it is blocked off for student use. So during the day, students do not have access to this portion of the site. This presentation has been sent to the California Department of Education. We've been working in alignment with them and their site standards because it's really important to be able to provide the appropriate instructional facilities, whether it's indoor from classroom or outdoor of physical, physical education. And so really, we do have a limitation here at Jefferson Elementary. We're, we're working, the board has been with staff, working as best as they can to provide that. But as you can see, we are limited on any growth. And as we'll go further in this presentation, we'll show you some opportunities to expand the transitional kindergarten at the site. And that in doing so, just again, limits additional outdoor physical space for our students.
Yep, and so one thing that we'll get into later is you'll see this projection for the next couple of sites, we break it down. It is just an option to consider of having the fifth graders moving from Washington to Jefferson. So we're just showing it, not that that's something that's definitely is or isn't happening, but just as a look, because it's really important to kind of consider this. It's the kind of combined TK through eighth grade enrollment and capacity at both sites. But what we see here at Jefferson and this permanent capacity is including that new classroom building. And so with that, that again, so you know, by 2024, we're looking at enrollment of TK through fourth grade in excess of that permanent capacity. And again, there are still some portables there, which allows the consideration of fifth grade. But even with that, that is entirely dependent on those portable classrooms.
Correct.
Can I, can I speak to that for just a second? Would you mind going back one, Jen? So I think it's, I want to just make sure the city understands the city school subcommittee that, that for certain kinds of school funding, or excuse me, school facilities, construction funding, the addition of permanent facility requires the removal of temporary buildings. So we have portable buildings that we have to remove that are far outside their, their actual lifespan. So they might have been portable or temporary classrooms that were supposed to be used for 10 years, that have been used for 20. So some of those, because there are 12 classrooms in the new building, 12 portables have to be removed. So there are some requirements in order for us to fund school construction like that. The other thing that I think is really important when looking at these aerial maps is that our, our schools are incredibly landlocked. So, and the CDE has requirements for outdoor space and has, has, you know, requirements for acreage. So I think you really get a sense of that. It's also important to know that no grade under third grade can be in a two-story, can be on the second floor of a two-story building. So we've put in a two-story building to try to make the most of our facility, but only third and fourth grade can go up there. So we can't build a two-story, you know, early primary building to maximize our space because we can't legally put kindergarteners or first graders or even second graders on the second floor. So I just wanted to point those things out because those are some of the minutia we deal with when we are working on, how do we fund new facilities? How do we replace aging portables? It's pretty complex. So thank you for the allowing interruption.
Oh, absolutely. I mean, this is a dialogue, we're presenting, but if you have any input, please.
No, it's good, good to.
I was going to jump in about the two-story.
And here, here's one other thing that I just have to throw into the mix. When we talk about moving fifth grade back, that is an instructionally appropriate move because from the standpoint of, of curriculum in the state of California, there is a transition between fifth and sixth grade. You essentially go to middle school in the sixth grade. So there's a split in the curriculum at that point. We are using our facilities based on capacity, not based on what's best for students. We're, we're trying to balance the spaces we have with the students we have. So it would be ideal, even if it's not, it's, you know, my dream would be to organize our facilities on the basis of what's best for kids and not on the basis of being completely landlocked.
No, yeah, that's, I captures that very well. So again, just looking at what the numbers would look like with actually the traditionally elementary third grades altogether of in excess of 700 students by 2025.
Yep.
And then at Washington, meanwhile, so again, showing the new gem that's over on that portion of the campus now.
But I think what, sorry, I think what is an opportunity at this site is really the drop-off and pickup at the site. As, as the site was originally established back in the 50s, right? It was more, kids walk to school. Now our community has grown, we're bringing, parents are driving their kids in, right? This is, this frontage and this drop-off pickup hasn't been, oops, I always move quickly, hasn't been updated. So we've been adding classrooms, right? But not fixing again those ancillary facilities or infrastructure. There's also just the, you'll see on our, on our slide where we have some proposed opportunities for the site, but also just the dead end of the street. So limited parking limitations and drop-off and pickup. But it definitely has, it's more closer to the, the site acreage. So it's at 10.1 and CDE, the state recommends 12.6. So it's definitely getting closer to, to that, but it still is undersized. Like Superintendent McLean stated, it is too landlocked. There's not, there's nowhere else for us to go with this site as we continue to have more students generated for our district.
Yep, and so then, just looking now, so again, with the fifth graders at the site, really already tightly, you know, a tight fit already. And so that again, with growth largely fueled from development, we just see how that pattern continues.
Yes, and I think like Superintendent McLean said, absolutely, this site would benefit from the more 6'8" traditional instructional grade configuration. But again, putting the kids from one to another, it's, it's just moving a problem, right? It's the kids aren't the problem, but the capacity, there's limited capacity at both sites, limited acreage for play at the elementary school level. So again, it's continuing to just move, move a, and one problem to another site. So we're looking at that.
Yeah, and so then just a quick look at, so again, just including the JEH with the high school enrollments, when we look at that overall capacity. Again, just a single portable, one of the older ones still in use by the district serving that program that we can go ahead and moving to the high school. Again, just seeing the number of portables there that provide a decent amount of the capacity available at the site. And then as we'll get into just kind of the layout and how the acreage is arranged with both the maintenance and transportation being so prominently located next to the school and, and school street, kind of bisecting the campus are just some of the issues that the state, you know, certainly will just want to keep a very close eye on as we just work on planning the optimal way to just benefit all the students in the district with effective facility and site planning.
Absolutely, and again, we dive a little deeper into this when we go into the opportunities for the facility.
Yep, but what we have here again with, due to the portable classrooms that are still available, the capacity works, but just with the permanent spaces already over capacity. And again, will only be much more so with that growth that we are forecasting for the next few years.
All right, so now that you've got all the data, I know that was a lot, but it's important for the foundation of what we're, we're planning, right? So we have to know where, where we've been, where we are, and then now where can we go? So how districts, school districts throughout the state of California, how do we plan? And what does a timeline look like? Districts do what we just did. They evaluate your existing facilities, the capacity, the utilization, and then what the growth is, either based on natural baseline without development and then with development. You then look at educational specifications and updating your facility's master plan. What are educational specifications? They are a guideline for architects, consultants, when designing schools. So how does the facility match the instructional program that Superintendent, Superintendent McLean and the board of Cloverdale USD want to deliver to their students, right? There, there's a nexus between those two that helps everyone plan appropriately. So you review and update the educational specifications, you update your master plan, right? Cloverdale has, USD has already gone out for a bond. They've been great stewards of this money. But back when they went for the bond, they already had a short call. So we need to update that and keep that as a living document. And then knowing what our total need is, how do we implement the need? Because we don't have all the money today to do all the needs. And there's, there's not enough time, there's not enough contractors to do everything right today. So we put together an implementation plan of the projects that are district priorities based on lots of different things. We're going to walk you through those priority lists and then put that to a phasing. And once we understand what, what we can do, we don't want, we don't ever want the funding to drive the facilities, but sometimes that does, right? Sometimes money today for a program is now something that we're going to try to support going forward. So we look at all of that together, and then it's just a circular process. We go back and we continue like Superintendent McLean has said, we're evaluating this on an ongoing basis. Really, I think one of the questions everybody asks, like, why does it take so long for school districts to build schools or to do this process? Well, I, it's really important for the community and for the city to understand that school districts are the second safest building in the state of California, first being hospitals. So California Department of Education, the state of California, puts a very, very high standard to our schools. And so in the design, the construction, and the actual building type and materials, those are all at an increased level. My husband's a contractor, it's like, he can build a house for a lot cheaper than you can build a school, right? But the, all the kids in the state are going to my house. So I always try to remind him of that. It also takes a little bit longer because we are a state agency. A local education agency is actually at the state level. So we have, we report and get approval by the State Division of State Architects, California Department of Education, Geological Services. List goes on and on. Office of Public School Construction is who funds us. So not only do we have all the state, but then we also work really closely with the fire, the local county health for kitchens and anything to do with California Environmental Quality Act. We work with the Attorney General and lots of agents. We work with the Attorney General and, um, lots of agencies that we work with, all the acronyms, alphabet soup. So, um, that is, everybody wants to have a hand in making sure that our facilities for the kids are the safest and the best that they can be. What's a realistic timeline for K twelve construction? There isn't one, right? It varies out always. So, um, but if I'm fast tracking our project, right? I can do design and in about a year, I can do that. It's a minimum of four months approval from the Division of State Architects and California Department of Education. That is a very quick. But depending on the type of project, it can range from four to sometimes a year, depending on if it's a brand new school. Again, it's going through in all those approvals, the California Department of Education is reviewing it for all Title V requirements and Division of State Architecture is reviewing it for fire, life, safety, accessibility and structural. When we finally get our plans approved, we have to go out for a formal bid, bidding process, and that process can take two to three months, depending on what type of delivery method we choose to, um, have for each project. Once we go through that bidding process, the board then, um, the Cloverdale Unified School District Board has to approve that project. Um, again, construction, right? We, we are, we do work miracles over the summer and we do get some construction projects done in sixty days. But majority of our projects can take, you know, half a year to multiple years. You've seen in your own community at Jefferson, the, the two-story building, right? It's been there for some time, we're working on it, but, um, it takes time. And you will see us in the community, building our schools and making these renovations, um, over sometimes periods of years. And then once it's actually built, there's this, this whole thing of like, it's a new building, we need to certify it and we need to occupy it. There's certification process that we have to have, um, by, uh, some like consultant, third party that comes in and they certify the building that is built within the standards of, of the plans and within Title V and all the structural requirements, et cetera. So, um, depending on when, you know, we occupy them, we have our teachers come in, it's certified now. We have our teachers come in, we train them on the new facility or maintenance, operations staff gets trained on the facility. So that takes a period of time. We just don't open the doors and move on in. So I think it's really just important for the city and the community to know that, that it takes time for us to, right? We understand that as development comes in, it's a, it's a process. We understand as a cities, working on their general plan and implementing changes within infrastructure in the community. It takes time, it takes time for us as well. This gets back to why does it cost so much? So labor costs, like I said, all the people who want to be involved, all the processes for approval. We have some other things. So public works, um, we're a public entity, just like the city. We are required to pay prevailing wage for every, every, um, one who's on our site, labor, um, and skilled, skilled and trained workforce. Materials cost more, there's a higher level of standard for those materials. So, and it's a little bit more complicated. So there's a material cost. And then we're required as, um, as a LEA, Local Education Agency, that is, getting these plans approved by the state of California, we're required to have state inspectors, inspectors of records who are licensed by the state of California to, um, monitor our project, the entire process. So as, you know, if you're building a house, the, um, building department comes up, they'll check you in phases, right? Of completion of your project. We have an inspector on site the entire time of our project, making sure that we're building to the standards that the state, uh, approved. So all of that coming together, it just costs more. This is a realistic budget for, these are some pricing. Just want to throw these numbers out there because again, like go back to my husband, he's like, oh, stuff doesn't really cost that much. No, it absolutely does. Um, so modernization is like a rehabilitation or taking an existing building and updating it. That now is set to, um, it can only be up to two hundred and six dollars per square foot. Why can it only cost that much? There was a, um, new IR, which is a, um, regulation by Division of State Architects that was passed in this summer called EB four, and it prohibits local education agencies to spend more on rehabbing than fifty percent of the, the state's costs for new construction. The state's cost is four hundred and twelve dollars per square foot. It absolutely costs more than four hundred dollars and twelve cents, um, a square foot. Or twelve dollars, excuse me, four hundred and twelve dollars a square foot. But, um, to the state, it doesn't. They survey everybody throughout the state, that's the state average, that's what it is. So if we come in now after July one and we go to do a rehabilitation or modernize a site and it goes over, the cost goes over two hundred and six dollars per square foot, we actually have to upgrade everything to new construction standards. So all your Title IV, so lighting has to be updated to the new construction standard, um, accessibility, structural. Everything has to be updated. So again, that just puts more cost on the local education agency or Cloverdale Unified. New construction, so Greenfield, nothing's there, right? The two-story building at Jefferson, that ranges anywhere. This is not exact for Jefferson. I'm just saying an average throughout Northern California ranges five hundred and fifty to a thousand dollars a square foot. On top of just the construction cost, we also have soft costs. A soft cost is, is everything except for the, uh, actual like hammer, bricks and mortar, right? It's the consultants, your architect, it's your CDE, California Department of Education fees, your permitting fees from Division of State Architecture, any of your testing that you have to do for the site, all of that. Everything above and beyond actual physical construction is approximately thirty percent. And then we also have furniture fixtures and equipment. So we build a building, but we have to furnish it. So a lot of the times, uh, districts utilize existing furniture. So, um, you know, Cloverdale will utilize their existing desks and they move them out of the portables that were demoed. They'll put them in the new classrooms, but some things such as technology, projectors, teacher's desk, there's lots of things other above and beyond that end up having to be purchased for a project. So those are, that's what we're looking at. There's a lot included in that. One thing that I want the community and city to also remember is that the, all, everything that I was just talking about is just the capital expenditure. Like Superintendent McLean stated, um, there's different buckets of money that districts manage. They're kind of like little businesses, right? They have a general fund business, they have a developer fee business bucket of money, they have a geo bond. They all have, um, specific things they can spend their money on. Everything I was just talking about could come out of capital funding. But we have to be, um, really strategic as a, as a district and understanding our operational funding. So how much money do we get, like Superintendent McLean said, per student? We're funded based on our average daily attendance. So, um, it's not based on property tax for every student generated, we get a certain amount of money. And sometimes, um, as you'll see, we'll show a map and an example a little bit later, but you'll see that the bucket is just full to the top. It's not overflowing with extra money from the general fund and, um, from, from the state or local taxes. And so it's really important that we, we remember anytime we add a facility, there's a potential for an operational impact as well. There's maintenance on that building, there's, um, there's staffing. If we add transitional kindergarten, we need more teachers, right? So not only do we need the facility, but we now need more staff. So again, just another expense that goes along with the capital side. All right. So we're going to dive a little bit into the site opportunities. I know it's a lot, but, uh, we love it. So, um, hope we're not boring you. Okay. So for Jefferson, um, there's some opportunities like you, you saw. So we, I think we can speak to them based on this map. It's a little easier to see. But really what we're looking here at Jefferson is opportunity to house based on the unfunded mandate of AB one thirty, house those transitional kindergarten students. We have reviewed the site with CD or the site plans, like diagram with CDE. It's not approved or this is just more for conversation. But how would we make transitional kindergarten and the required facilities for, uh, preschool, TK and full day kender work on the site? And providing appropriate playground, outdoor play space and, um, and, and utilizing what we have existing. So really what we're seeing here, um, again, this has not been approved by anyone. This is just for conversation. I think that's really important. We just want to use this for conversation. Is this is how, based on the projected enrollment that we have with the, and really aligning it to a more traditional TK five program. This is how we can make this work on the site, right? Having, um, up, getting a new multi-purpose room that is appropriately sized for the students at this facility or the site would house. Restoring the playfield. I know we do have some playground area that's built here, but really creating a play field space, expanding this playground and getting rid of some of these older portables that are still existing.
I'll say playfield that's supervisable from every other area of the campus that the state would then view as legitimately able to be used for PE instruction.
Absolutely. So one of the requirements that, uh, the state has for, um, the TK five program is they do need line of sight from classrooms to play areas. So that's why if these classrooms were the full day kender classrooms, transitional kender or preschool, they have play area that is direct line of sight, that is a Title V requirement. As well as Rob was stating, their field area, it has to be direct line of sight. By the under, if you can remember underneath this, they do have some field area now that these portables have been removed, but it really still is, um, not a direct line of sight and isn't ideal. And CDE definitely does not recommend continuing that. If we were to add additional students in classrooms. Washington Middle, I'll just.
I, I have to interrupt you just a second. If you can go back to that last slide. So I want to reiterate what, what Jen, you said multiple times. We, we, um, because the, the, uh, Little League, um, field, this baseball field is a precious community resource. I don't want anyone who's observing this to feel panic stricken that we're doing away with that. We're looking at any variety of ways to house an early learning complex to accommodate, um, TK, kindergarten and also potentially, um, additional preschool because there's a real need for affordable childcare for students who are not yet school aged. So I want to, anyone who's here who might be, you know, concerned, we're going to eliminate that field. Don't panic. This is just for the purposes of conversation.
Absolutely. And everything we're showing from this, you know, these slides that we're going to show the next few are all just for conversation. So again, at Washington Middle, how, how do we, if, if on the, and if at Jefferson, we get rid of the Little League field or don't have that space, right? How would we then move it? Where would we move it? Creating, removing the solar array, creating more, um, field space, multi-use space here is really important. And then I think back to what I spoke to earlier in regards to the drop off pickup and just the congestion that is, um, centered around this area, really extending the street in some manner all the way through. So we can allow traffic to come in and come out. So these are good, just ideas, but these are some opportunities. And this is how we look to our planning efforts with the city. It's really important and critical that we have these conversations and we, we discuss, you know, these are needs that we have and this is how we're thinking it through. How, how will it impact you? Cloverdale High has a few more opportunities. And it's really, Cloverdale High is really more centered around safety and then, um, creating, um, more spaces for the district, you know? There is some limitation at the district. You know that Cloverdale Unified sits in a couple of portables, a district office. So how do we take, um, some of the community interests, but also incorporate district needs? And then safety elements here at, at the high school? Again, this is just for example, but, um, if everyone is familiar with the high school, we do operate our maintenance and operations and transportation department in the same parking lot as student, um, parking. So relocating that outside of student access would be really important to allow this for student parking and safety, um, creating a new space over here for M and L. And then keeping, preserving the community plaza, it's really important to the community. It's a beautiful frontage for our, our schools. And, um, but then also creating a district office that's a permanent facility, maybe increasing the library, building a performing arts or auditorium for the school youth and also the community. Yes, those are things that the districts, districts thinking about. CDE, California Department of Education, the state absolutely thinks these are all great plans. The one other opportunity here at the site that is definitely a concern to the state is the use of an activity on school street, having this being active street while school is in session. It's definitely, um, I've been there, it, there's a lot of traffic and, you know, kids are walking back and forth. And really, it's a difficult site, the, the community of the district, working with what they have. But if there's any opportunity to partner with the, with the city on limiting use, you know, put gates or block this off for just school use, that would definitely be an interest of not only the district, but of the state. We do have the South property, um, that you know, down near Baumgartner Ranch. And some of the opportunities there that the district's looking at right now is really for, um, sports use, right? To take if, if there's an opportunity, sports are incredibly important. And we're reviewing these as an opportunity, um, to develop. The district is working through the California Department of Education site approval. So when this site was purchased, it was purchased for potential new, new, new school, right? New school facility. As we continue to move forward, some options are being developed with the board. But we do have to get, um, the state's approval on the site, whether or not we put an actual physical school building or a school athletic facility. It still has to be CDE site approved. So we're working through that process now. All of those projects, there's a lot. And again, those are, um, just some examples. Nothing is set in stone. It's just, uh, starting the conversation. But what, what I think is really important is how do we, that was a lot, right? So how do we prioritize those capital facility projects? Well, there are lots of ways and these are some, right? Prioritize warm, safe and dry. That's really important. We don't want leaking roofs. We don't want kids getting, you know, hit by a car in the parking lot. Those types of things. Then state mandates, we as local education agencies are constantly inundated with unfunded mandates, unfortunately. And, uh, one of them happens to be the transitional kindergarten program as Rob has described. So that's definitely important. We're going to have kids, we're, we're legally required to house those kids. We need to have a place to house them. So that's really important. Funding is absolutely helps in prioritizing a project, right? We're going to go through the funding opportunities in a moment, but funding today versus funding tomorrow helps us in understanding, um, what projects to prioritize. There's district priorities. The board absolutely has priorities and those, those become, um, part of the puzzle. Classroom, ancillary spaces, campus equity, um, the deferred funding, like I said, any special conditions that come up. And then opportunities for community partners with the city, um, county developers and or, um, other. and or um other district partners such as, you know, sports leagues, et cetera. So all of that, all of those items come into play when we look at how we prioritize our projects. All right, funding opportunities. There's different funding opportunities for districts. Um there's local, and I'm gonna dive a little bit deeper into what Superintendent McLean said in regards to our local funding. Um but local funding, we were funded um through a local control funding formula. There's major deferred maintenance funding, which goes to help, you know, paint roofs, carpet replacement, developer fees, which are paid from the mitigation of development. And we get a level one statutory fee, which is four dollars and eight cents per square foot. General obligation bonds, the district um has has a current bond that's open and they're they're winding down that. There's an opportunity for certificate of participation, which is more of a short-term loan. Parcel taxes, those are really used when a district, we don't have any currently, but when a district has a certain area that is um impacting a district and um and um they liked, you know, wanna apply a specific tax just to that one area. And then facility use or joint use. Um the state also has some funding opportunities. We're gonna dive a little deeper into that because um the school facility program is where districts really leverage all their local funds. It's main main opportunity to leverage. We have the universal transitional kindergarten, which is eighty-one thirty that we'll speak to.
Yeah, there's some funding for that, but much, I haven't been calling that an unfunded mandate. So, but I would say it's more like ninety-five percent.
Yes, yes.
There is some.
There's for transitional kindergarten in the state of California, there's approximately nine billion dollars worth of need of facilities improvements today. And the state has allocated four hundred and seventy-seven million dollars to that program. So there's a little bit of money out there, but not much. So we wanna get a piece of every penny that we can. Um there's CalShake, which is a program through the California Energy Commission that um opened up in August of, or was passed in August of twenty twenty and opened up this um this the summer, this summer. Um and then there's a potential for two um or one future state bond right now, eighty-seventy-five, which would be twelve billion dollars, um which is then um when we get money in that pot, it replenishes the school facility program um buckets. Um so there's eighty-seventy-five, which is for twelve billion, includes community college, and then SB twenty-two, which is for fifteen billion and includes um all higher education. And then we do absolutely look for opportunities to leverage any federal funding, FEMA, State Order of Resource Control Board, all the SRS money, anything that we can on that. So local funds, um Cloverdale passed measure age in two thousand eighteen for forty-six million dollars. At that time, it put them at eighty-four percent of their bonding capacity, which means they only have sixteen more percent. We can't go out to the community and ask for any more money through a joint general obligation bond. Um at the time when we we had the bond passed, we had a hundred and thirty-nine million dollars worth in need and we we had shortfall of ninety-three million. That's simple now. How are districts funded? I alluded to it. Superintendent McLean alluded to it, but this is how uh Cloverdale Unified is an LCFF district, okay? So take your property tax money that we get and you pour it into this bucket. This bucket is our funding bucket. Everybody has the same size bucket in the state of California, every school district. And take that. Well, Cloverdale's only fills up this much. So then when the state comes in and they fill the bucket, their remainder portion, um and that's all we get. We get one. Basic aid districts, and I'll show you a map of all the surrounding districts around our dis- around Cloverdale. Basic aid districts, their property taxes fill the whole bucket and then they get another bucket that picks up some more cash, right? Um and then the state's over here and says, well, you have a whole bucket plus a little extra. We're not gonna give you any money. They don't need it, right? They got their local funding that the states requiring every district to um to meet. So they keep all their extra money. So Cloverdale Unified sits over as a local control funding formula, LCFF district. To uh Superman Superintendent McLean's um point earlier is this is Cloverdale Unified. The red are all your LCFF districts. So Cloverdale Unified is LCFF. And then all of our surrounding um Sonoma County districts are all basic aid districts. So these are all highly funded districts that get more than just their property tax. They're they have extra. They have another little extra bucket. They're all surrounding us. So that's just another constraint that we have in our in in our district, in our community. Um, all right, uh Rob, I can hand it over to you.
Give your voice a rest. So we talked about that state facility program. And at the state level, this is really the flagship of how the state supports school facility funding. So you have within the SFP, all of these other programs. So uh we'll go through some details of a lot of them, but the big things to keep in mind with this are, A, as Jen already alluded to, the funding for this comes from the passage of state bond. So the state is still working on it through its backlog and because it does take a little while for them to process some of these. And so there is still funding left from the last bond, but there's already more people in line for that funding. So if you get in now, uh you can still apply, but before that can be processed, another state bond will have to pass.
So everybody vote for the state. Just kidding, but I'm not.
So that's one thing, but now then that uh, so we've kind of been over new construction and modernization fairly straightforward. Either you have a need to add classroom capacity due to enrollment growth or you have facilities that have reached a certain age for a certain level of enrollment that you have. And so you can generate some eligibility there. The rest of these, I get a little bit more specific, but uh we'll just kind of touch on a lot of those as we go through. But these are all under that broad umbrella of the estate facility program.
Yep.
So new construction again, so a lot, another big thing with all these is that these are matching programs. So the state has money available. However, you as the district have to have a local funding to match it with. In most cases, we'll get into uh some exceptions to this.
Absolutely. And I think what's really important too, and when we say the state in this instance for new construction, we say the state provides a fifty-fifty match. So they give you fifty percent if you provide fifty percent. It's not on the actual project cost. It's on what they say the project eligibility is or the project cost is. So just, you know, um an average classroom can cost us um one point five million dollars. The state will provide us a half a million. They're not providing seven fifty. So just to know, it's not really apples to apples in regards to percentage.
Yes, so but of the money that the state can provide through their regulations in this program, uh the district matches that on a fifty-fifty basis, but that also means that if you can leverage this funding, uh every dollar of your local funding multiplies into a dollar of state funding as well, if you can line it up right.
Absolutely.
And again, but this one is based on uh the projected enrollments exceeding your capacity and the need showing the state with numbers that you need more classrooms than you have. So modernization is actually a little bit more generous. Uh the state does sixty percent of what it views as the total project cost, which again, just to reiterate, the actual cost will pretty much always exceed uh what we're looking at with the state's figures. But again, it's very helpful. Uh this is based on portable classrooms over twenty years old and permanent classrooms over twenty-five years old begin generating eligibility in this program, which never expires.
Yeah.
But it is site-specific. So you can, if you have eligibility that's generated at Jefferson, you can't use that to do a project at the high school.
And um Cloverdale Unified has been absolutely active in these programs. I just want the um community and city to know.
Absolutely, yep. And so then uh minimum essential facilities, we touched on this, it's funded out of the new construction pot and it uses new construction eligibility. But you demonstrate those, uh this is the mechanism where you demonstrate that you have those undersized ancillary facilities. And so uh you can use some of that new construction eligibility to build that bigger MP room to get the gymnasium that you don't even have at a middle school site, for instance.
Exactly.
Just some of those examples there. And then uh with the, having a high school in your district uh available whenever there is career technical education funding. Uh so just a very important one that again is a fifty-fifty match, but you can get get equipment with this one, which is very helpful.
Yes, and it's a great program that supports your local community and the instructional side, not just a physical classroom.
Yep. And then as we mentioned, so we have the uh little over four hundred and seventy-seven million that is available, but that is for pre-K, TK and full-day kindergarten. So there is a lot of eligible projects uh that are hoping to get some of that funding uh and.
But what's cool about this program is that it's a seventy-five, twenty-five local match. Um it is a um competitive program and it may not be used to purchase portables, which is really important. It has to be used to purchase um modular constructed buildings or hard art, hard stick or, you know, stick build, hard stick. Sorry, stick build um construction. And they have to be thirteen hundred and fifty square feet classrooms with a dedicated restroom. Um definitely different than a portable, as you as you know. The first round opens March first of twenty twenty-two and we're working with the district on this. You get priority points if you're financial hardship, but the district is not financial hardship. And then for the free reduced price meals percentage, um which the district does get some preference points for that. So we're working with them to support that program and any opportunity we can um to leverage that money.
Absolutely. And then uh facility hardship, now this is the one exception. I mentioned that the line was already kind of the the dance card of the previous bond was already filled up. But if you have a project that presents an immediate health and safety uh condition, you can move to the front of those lines under the facility hardship program. And so now others, you don't just get to, uh you know, try to be cute with that. I mean, you have to have uh, you know, an engineer or other professional report confirming the situation. You have to have concurrents from a state agency.
But we work really closely with the district and keeping those open lines of communication.
Absolutely. And and should there be a need to utilize this program, uh it is good to know that it's there.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Um this is a supplemental program that if the district was completely broke, they had not one penny and they could meet some of the requirements listed, they could get their match, their state match, so like on the new construction, fifty-fifty, right? Local state, they could get their local match met by the state. So a hundred percent of the project cost, not the total cost, but the state's project cost of funded. So we work, keep a really close eye on any opportunity um for that. Um again, I spoke to the um future state bonds. What I think is really important about this is that the future state bonds could change and they'd be beneficial for Cloverdale Unified, where they would prioritize small school districts, which is any school district under twenty-five hundred students. Um it prioritizes higher free and reduced price meals percentages. And then if you were um if we were a financial hardship. So it's definitely supportive of our school district, but we just need to continue to keep an eye on it um as we move forward. Um, go ahead.
Yeah, so we had alluded to at one point with the local funding, the developer fee. So just for those who aren't aware of exactly how that works at the state level. So every even year in January, the state allocation board uh will review costs and authorize an increase in that statutory fee. Uh which uh so that will be happening in just a couple of months. But back in twenty twenty, that fee was set at four dollars and eight cents for residential, sixty-six cents for commercial. And so with a justification study, uh the school district is able to collect those rates on uh that residential or commercial development that occurs.
Correct.
Yeah, I think.
Oh, go ahead.
No, I I I but we want, uh we do, I wanna show an exercise uh in a moment on uh the extent to which that actually offsets the costs associated with the students generated by that development.
Correct. And um there is an opportunity for districts or state to collect a little higher uh fee. Currently, Cloverdale Unified does not qualify for a level two developer fee based on some of the parameters listed here, but we continue to monitor it. Um but I think absent of the level one or level two, really to Superintendent McLean's earlier statement is that it um is really important for us to, as you'll see in the next example, to have a seat at the table, to be able to discuss the impact of development. Not, you know, not a single homeowner doing a remodel to their home, but really a development that's coming, planned development that's coming in, generating the students, the the ones that we listed. So really quick, an example of an affordable housing unit. This, this is easy because it was a one-to-one with the.
Exactly, one student per you.
Per unit. Um so one unit times an average of eleven hundreds per feet, four dollars and eight cents gives me four thousand four hundred and eighty-eight dollars for that unit, right? The district gets to collect those feet. For one student, what we did was we took the classroom, nine hundred and sixty square foot um of this classroom average, I'm not doing it on a um kinder or TK, divided that among the twenty-five um average of twenty-five point six seven students, that's a state loading factor average um times an average cost per square feet um gives me, it costs twenty-eight thousand, close to twenty-nine thousand dollars to house that student. Um and that's just the basic construction of a classroom. That's not additional infrastructure. That's not the multi-purpose room, uh ancillary spaces, drop-off pickup. That's nothing. That's just a classroom. So with every student generated, I fall twenty-four thousand dollars, almost twenty-five thousand dollars short just for the actual classroom. So that's incredibly important. That's why we really do need a seat at the table. We really do wanna be a part of the conversation from the beginning because we're having to to mitigate this shortfall.
Yeah.
Um these are a lot of funding opportunities. We we're kind of walking you through and we'll share this with the the committee after. Um but how can we align? So we've looked through every single opportunity that we told you about and we've aligned it to a potential either partnership or a funding opportunity as as we've discussed. So um there's lots of ways. We're really strategic about how we fund um projects and we partner. And we want to be a community partner. So um I won't go into every single um one, but I think.
Covered the projects before and you've seen the funding sources. This is just aligning.
Yep, aligning everything. I think what's the most important is a continued partnership with the city of Cloverdale and the community. Really ways that we can partner joint use facilities, facility use agreements. Um condition of approval for any planned development is really key. And then safe routes to school. There's others, but those are just the top four that are really important to us as we continue to um support our community with the growth that's coming to Cloverdale. And that is our presentation.
Thanks for the time. We were trying to, even though we started a little bit late, I wanted to make sure that we stuck to a timeframe that allowed time for the for the city school subcommittee to ask questions or ask for clarification. We just gave you a big old information dump that was probably more information than anybody needed at one time. But there's some urgency to um, you know, to the situation because development is happening as we speak. And we wanna make sure that the city and the city school subcommittee really understand that our, we are not opposed to development and there is no type of development that we are more concerned about than any other. It is the scope of development um and the lack of any engagement on the part of any of the developers to do their legal duty and mitigate the impact. And that's where we really have to enlist the city. So it doesn't matter whether it's affordable housing, single-family housing. There's an obligation. And that that is where, you know, I don't believe the taxpayers, whether we had the bonding capacity or not, should make up for what developers who are coming into our community and building um may ultimately profit from. Um we can provide examples of how these partnerships between cities and school districts have worked in other settings. Um I really appreciate recently, uh you know, the city reached out and let me know about a planning commission meeting. Um so, you know, some of those things, those often those packets are very thick. So it's helpful when the city sees us as, you know, partners and says, hey, this is a meeting um that you probably, you know, that you may want to attend um and prompts us. Um so we don't miss those opportunities. And I'll also just say, you know, I came to the district during the pandemic in the middle of the crazy. Um I I think that that created some disconnect because you had a superintendent going out and another superintendent coming in. And one of the larger developers that. Coming in. And one of the larger developers that is building in multi-phased um steps here. Has not, never got a will serve letter from us, which is an obligation that developers have. Never got that letter and cannot produce any evidence of mitigation. So that's an example where they're so far into the process. That we may have no recourse and they're gonna have a huge impact. And and our hope is that by sharing this. You know, we are all more aware of kind of the steps that need to be taken because part of what makes a community. A strong community is making sure that the schools are strong and that. The, one of the unique um elements of the character of Cloverdale is we don't, you know, we are not a homogenous community. Um, but I believe the students of our community deserve good schools. And that, and that to me feels frankly like it's a civil rights issue. We have a very high number of students who are learning more than one language. We have a very high number of students who qualify for free and reduced lunch. I'm gonna fight to make sure they have the facilities that they deserve. Um, and that, you know, that's my personal uh, you know, statement. Um, and why I feel so passionately about about building this partnership proactively.
Thank you, Jennifer and Rob and Beth. I appreciate that. I wanna open it up to our panelists first. And uh see who has questions. Is there anyone that would like to go first?
Well, I'll just make a few quick comments because uh first of all, thank you for the very, very, very detailed. Presentation, a lot of information, obviously a lot of it. Uh, it's gonna take time to absorb it and understand it all, but certainly a lot of information. And thank you for that. Because it's important to our community. Uh, I just wanna say, you know, it's very, very. Difficult when the state continues to put mandates. They they're so, it's so easy to put a lot of mandates. And they don't put money. And you know, here we are trying to struggle through a process. And I and I visualize that because as a city, we do that all the time. The mandates come down and we try to fix it and work through it. But there's no money. And so it's trying to take money from one program to put towards a mandate. Which takes away another program and we're just constantly struggling at the local level, both for the district and cities and counties. And that and that's wrong and that needs to change. I mean, there's a constitutional provision in the state that says. State mandates need to be funded by the state. And for some reason, they take the approach that you could build a building, but. It's not gonna cost you anything. Go ahead and do it. And you're required to do it. And it just doesn't make sense. Uh, clearly there's a need based on the presentation. I I especially with the addition of the two-year car kindergarten. Uh, we need to do that, but the requirements, not only unfunded mandates. But the fact that the local government has lost a lot of ability to put things in place to try to rectify it. They've taken away a lot of local control. And I know our city attorney probably could address that quite detail. But it makes it very frustrating because there are very, well, there's a limitation to what the city can even do. So with that, you know, what I'd like to see is for us to take a look at. And see what realistically we can do from a legal. Option, because there's different legal opinions on what we can and can't do. But we need to kind of get some legal options that would fit within the parameters of things we can do. In a collaborated effort, whether it's to see, uh, what does it take to get a property tax system in place? To fund our school district or a Mellow Roos program. How would that look? And what are the steps that we need to do? Uh, certainly, we need the money, quality of life, schools, good police, good fire. You know, water, sewer, we need those. And this is all health services. So I think the real question that I have, and I'll end at this. Is what can we realistically as a local community? Do that would be within the legal parameters to enhance funding for our school district. And there's, you know, there's difference of opinions. You could do this, you could do that. And then there's other case law that says you can't do that. And I know there's cities that have ended up in litigation and lost million, millions of dollars by paying uh. Lawsuits as well as uh attorney fees for both the suing party as well as the defense of the. Si- the city's decision. So we we just can't go down that road. We need to really put together a plan that makes sense from a legal standpoint. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Paula. Uh, who wants to go next? Anyone else? David, Kevin, Preston, Ashley, anyone? All right, I have a couple of quick questions and or clarifying parts for this. Uh, Jennifer, on your, on your uh. Your presentation, you listed the station area downtown housing. Uh, what is that? I I as vice mayor, I've never even heard of that. And I don't know if this is from our master plan or where this came from. Okay. Gotcha. And then you had said five hundred and twenty five units equals three hundred and twenty students as you figured out. Out of the station area downtown housing is, was all of that affordable? Uh, I I apologize because I don't have it written down and I don't remember.
Yep, let me.
Okay. Okay. And so three hundred and twenty students equals approximately how many classrooms?
Three hundred and twenty students? Hold on, hold on.
It's, I would say about twelve classrooms. If equally distributed. I mean, you know, you end up with these bubble classes. It it depends on your class size, Todd, your, you know, your teacher contract on class size caps, et cetera. It's, you know, it's, um, but I would say about twelve, twelve to fifteen.
And that's what I'm looking for is what would you, what would you be looking for to make that number fit? Your district. And I I I know that we have to almost uh. Over imagine because you have to, you might end up with a classroom that has less kids, but you have to be prepared for the future. Uh, out of those twelve or with twelve classrooms, how much would it cost to build twelve classrooms? If you had, say, four at each site, so there's not one big project to make it efficient. With the going rate that we just did with the twelve classrooms in at Jefferson.
Well, just for the construction of that building, none of the incidentals, that was twelve million dollars. But there were a lot of other costs associated with that. That was twelve classrooms in one building that doesn't. Factor in any other facilities needs, like the multipurpose room being large enough. For the, you know, increased population or modifications to drop off and pick up because you have increased traffic or. Uh, any number of other kinds of needs. Um, you know, playground space, field space. To accommodate an increased number of students. With the addition of TK, um, you have to have separate. As P, I think many people know, you have to have separate play areas for our littlest students. Um, so they need their own playground and it has to accommodate, you know, the population. Um, and right now in the current Jefferson configuration, we have. I think some of the things that, you know, Jen and Rob talked about with regard to like sightlines. Our, our playground space is kind of tucked in between buildings and wraps around buildings. And it's very difficult to supervise. And it doesn't, with the exception of the field, which isn't used during the school day. Um, it is, you know, it doesn't give kids a lot of room to move.
So if we said a million dollars is very actually low.
Yes.
The cost. I I I mean, with, if you had to design each one, you're gonna be between one and two million dollars per classroom. Fair assessment. And you're, and you get how much in developer fees for these three hundred and twenty students?
Well.
Yeah. Yeah, I depend. I mean, yeah, that and that's almost the square footage. So the multifamily and affordable tend to be a little smaller. The single family homes will be a little larger. But yeah, but even if we were to call it, this is saying, averages out to fifteen hundred square feet across everything.
Times. Well, see, it's not really the same.
They average a thousand square feet, so you're five hundred and twenty five thousand square feet times four. So you're what? Is it two million bucks?
It, no, it's a lot lesser.
While while they're number crunching, I will say um that, you know, the, the cost of. Um, building a classroom um relative to the developers fears, it's a fraction. You know, it's a drop in the bucket. We just did an update. So so periodically, the. The developer fee rates change. So we'll go through this process again in early twenty twenty two. To make sure that we're collecting the maximum amount of developers fees. But when we've done calculations, literally, it it could, you know, help you potentially modify an existing classroom. It's nowhere near the cost of actual construction.
Which, which is the point I was getting to Superintendent McLean, because twelve classrooms is twelve to twenty four million dollars and you're going to end up with a tenth of that. So where do, where do we, where do we find that money? Because you know those grants are minimal. Uh, how, how does the city help you? Because we need to partner and be collaborative. Uh, we're kind of in the same boat. And I know David and Kevin are probably chomping at the bit as I'm talking too much. But I'm trying to figure out how we can partner together to make this happen instead of just, you know, putting in houses and then override the school. And uh make it inefficient for you and and bad for the children.
Well, if I can be extremely direct.
That's why we're here.
We need, so I will share the five or six page letter that we sent to the planning commission. Uh, following a recent planning commission meeting so that everyone on this committee has an equal opportunity to read it. The um, the, the reality is that the commission and the city have to say, have you done this? Do you have, have you been through this process? Here's the way that we partner with our schools. And from the standpoint of legal requirements, I think, I don't think there's a lot of ambiguity. There's a lot of um case law on this. There's a lot of evidence. I know that, you know, Jennifer went through this process in Napa. Um, you know, we include a, a, a very brief kind of case. Study about how it can be done in the letter to the planning commission. Um, if, if projects are approved without. Developers being held to this part of the process. Then we're never gonna get out from under the burden of this. And so we are, you know, trying to elaborate on the process enough. Without, you know, as a partner to say, hey, we have multiple developers who have failed to do. What they are obligated to do. And so we need the city to say, stop, go back. Um, I I don't wanna get into the fine grain because I realize that might change the nature of this meeting. But I'm ha- you know, I can provide examples of our efforts to try to engage in that process and how unfruitful they have been. So we as a school district alone can't make this happen. And you know, the, the perception that we may have deep pockets, I don't know if anyone thinks that, but. I think sometimes because we're a state, you know, we're, we're a state funded agency, there may be misunderstandings about access to dollars. Or people may not even understand the bonding process, even if it shows up on a proper property tax bill. Um, and what it means to be at eighty five percent, eighty four percent of our bonding capacity for a community. I think one of the things that um, uh, council member Paula mentioned, a Mellow Roos tax, that might be an option. Um, because that can be directed toward a specific development. So the only those um homes generate that tax. So the whole community isn't paying the tax. The whole community votes on it, but only those, those um, uh, units that were built. And were under, essentially didn't meet their obligation, would pay that additional tax. So there, so there are some ways that we can potentially. Mitigate the unaddressed impact, you know, sort of on the, on the backside. But what we're hoping to do is do it on the front side. So typically. A developer that's building three hundred units of housing would build a school. Right? I mean, that's the kind of thing that developers do. And. You know, so that's an example of what we might expect of a developer that is building that scale of, of a project. Um, and we, we're happy to provide examples of that. We're not asking for anything or saying that, you know, something that's a pipe dream. These are things that have happened in, you know, in other communities and are, you know, if we know how to operate together, we can make sure those things happen.
It can also be added to the conditions of approval by the planning commission.
Well, I see. And that's where I I wanna get clarification from everything is because Alex, if you don't mind, I I'm. I'm confused because I'm hearing different things with that.
So, 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 I mean, I would say just, it has been said uh many times. I mean, council member Paula said it too, you know. The same, we're on the flip side of the unfunded mandates that the, the school districts under. So we have these sort of. Mandates to approve housing, uh, production. Um, eh, you know, without much uh. Flexibility to, you know, impose additional requirements. So, um. You know, under the state law, you know, what it says is it identifies that. You know, the fee mitigation, uh, those inadequate fees will be the exclusive method of mitigating. That the city can impose. And certainly, if the school district, I I I heard the, the council member, excuse me. The superintendent mentioned that there's a legal obligation to provide these will serve letters, you know, I I'm not a school district. Uh, I don't practice in that law, so I'm not familiar with that. But if that's a statute that, you know, could be sent to us that says a city can't approve. A project that hasn't received a will serve letter. Um, you know, we would, of course, we would love to see that because we, you know, we wanna do all we can to help the. Um, the district, I'm just not aware of that. I haven't been able to find anything besides this. Language in the government code saying that these fees are that exclusive method that the city. Um, can impose. And and one thing that I think. We are running into and without talking about specific projects is we have some projects that are in the pipeline. That comply with all of the city's adopted standards, um, which makes it much harder to sort of. Encourage, for lack of a better word, them to come to the table. Whereas if they were, uh. You know, needed a use permit or needed a rezoning or needed a, um. Uh, uh subdivision improvement, we'd have a little more authority to sort of force them to the table. Whereas now, all we can sort of do is ask politely. And and again, you know. If, if the school district has, you know, authority, I'm certainly don't claim to be an expert on, on school district law. You know, that would be very helpful for us.
If you don't mind, I'd like to respond to um your comments and, and to, um. You know, the, some of the other things we've heard. So the statutory fees are certainly a piece of that and, and. Um, there are other avenues and other things available. And I think what is most important is that the city absolutely has. The authority to condition approval on projects on a mitigation agreement between a developer and the school district. That is a common practice. Um, it, we see it all the time. So that you, there certainly is legal authority to support saying. Hey, developer, you have an obligation. Uh, we all need to get to the room together. We need to see that mitigation agreement. Between you and the school district to make, to make sure that those impacts are being mitigated. That, just like any other infrastructure, schools are part of the infrastructure. And just as your community develops and grows. The schools are part of that. So it's um extremely logical. And there's that connection that of course, those are gonna be considered. As part of the overall approval process. And so as the city continues to receive through the development process. Different approvals, um, that, that partnership is important in making sure that the developer is staying on top of that with the school district. And in making sure that those agreements are in place. So, um, I think, I think what the district is really trying to. Um, you know, ask of the city is for that partnership and for that support that, yeah, we're going to stand. Not necessarily, hey, we, we have, uh, the city has independent, you know, cash flow that they can just, you know, lob over to the school district. I think there are ways through, you know, Mellow Roos and other avenues that we can explore and we can talk through. But really, it's getting down to that relationship with the developer and supporting the district to say, hey, developer, before we approve these things. We need to see those mitigation agreements in place. And we can work together on, on getting you the legal support for that. And and Alex, you and I can talk through that. Um, so that there's a comfort level of knowing what that boundary looks like and, and what you need to feel assured of that.
Joe?
Uh, thank you, uh, through the chair. And thank you for that comment because that last part is where I was actually asked. I really think, you know, we're not gonna resolve that here at this meeting. So I believe that uh the legal minds need to come together. To really look at the law because we want to make sure we're on solid grounds as look at options. Because I think we all agree, we want good, solid schools. That's not the issue. It's how do we do that within the law? And there's a lot of law out there that, the, the conflicts with each other. I mean, the laws require certain things. But they don't allow you to raise the money to implement them. So it is. So it is truly a challenge. So I would like to see this as a follow up item where, when we have our next meeting, we'll have an update on this particular topic as to what are the options available for the city to consider within the legal parameters to put some things in place that would help mitigate this problem. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. One hundred percent support that. And I look forward to that because that's the conversation we've been having for years. Since around 2016, I think we started that conversation. Anyone else on this panelists that want to make any comments or questions at this point? Seeing none, Yvonne, can we open it up to the attendees? I don't see any hands yet.
I don't.
I would imagine if they know that we're going to.
I see one hand so far. Allow them to talk. It's Calvin Callum Weeks.
You could speak now.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate it. My name is Callum Meeks. I am the Policy Director for Generation Housing. Really appreciate you guys all having this conversation today. It's definitely important. You know, we we want to make sure our schools are fully funded. Completely understand that. I do want to emphasize that, you know, irrespective of, you know, how much affordable housing Cloverdale has, we always need more. And we need the, we need the diversity and affordability of housing that can really help sustain our community as it does grow. I I guess my my one question I I would have for your your consultants, though, is is did they account for movement within the community of children in terms of, you know, coming to these final numbers in terms of like pupils or students, you know, originating from from new development? You know, as I understand it, there is a considerable amount of housing that is likely to be removed from the housing stock due to, you know, various dilapidated conditions. And I imagine, you know, some of those students will probably or potentially transition over. I could be wrong, and I would just love to hear your thoughts. And thank you so much for your time.
Callum, I'll start that conversation. You talk about dilapidated housing. There's only been a few in Cloverdale that are being dealt with at this time, so that doesn't make a huge difference. And with two of the developments, we've asked for Cloverdale to be a priority to them. And they tell us numbers of percentages they've had from within their own areas. However, there's no guarantees from them that we, they will house Cloverdale's people first to keep the students the same number. And so that's something that we are dealing with as well. And I think we had that conversation today with the city, so. Thank you for your time and your comments. Yvonne, you want to be the next?
Sure. Angela Cordova.
Angela, go ahead.
Unmute yourself, please.
Sorry about that. I couldn't find the option. So my concerns, and I understand that this is just, you know, discussion, but I I do have concerns for losing a field. That's that's pretty big to lose a field. Congestion in that neighborhood is going to be really impacted. If there's an emergency, it's already a disaster back there as it is. So to add all these additions and it, I think it would just create a very serious traffic congestion back there. We already have issues with pickup and drop off. It's really small. Again, I think about the emergency type situation. I think about the residents in the area. You know, they're already impacted with what's there now, but then to start adding to it, just.
Angela, you put yourself on mute. There you go.
It's in such a smaller school is concerning. That's one of our smaller campuses. And again, you know, just the impact of adding more, you know, kids back there and congestion to that neighborhood is very concerning. I don't know why they wouldn't just build the buildings on the new property. I don't really understand why we have to remove the field or even incorporate the field into the project as far as building goes. And, you know, I'm concerned with, what is it, Alex Moog? Your position is attorney, you represent the school?
The city, in the city attorney's office.
Okay, so I mean, my personal opinion, you know, I think you're, I don't know you personally, but I think that your presentations never seem to be in support of Cloverdale. It always seems to be in support of whatever developer or or situation is is presented. You're always in support of that, it seems. It doesn't seem like you actually work for us. And, you know, I'm not trying to offend you or anything. I'm just calling it as I personally see it, you know. And I think that the city might possibly need to rethink about, you know, hiring a different attorney for these matters because we need somebody who's going to represent the best interests of our small city and somebody who's going to come forth and say, you know, this is what you can do. And I don't see that from you. I really don't. It's it's very disappointing because that is what you're hired to do, not tell us what the developer can do and what's going to happen to us, rather than let's brainstorm and figure out. I mean, this is a huge impact. You know, I don't know if you live in this community. It's not my business and I'm not asking you. But I'm just saying, this is a huge impact. We're talking traffic, we're talking people, we're talking, we don't even have enough teachers for what we currently have. It's just, it's not a good choice. And all I'm asking, as a community member, it, you know, who also has an education in law background, I'm asking you to maybe take a step back and look at how you represent for us. You you you're paid by our community. And that's all I'm asking is that you represent and look for the best interests of our city. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Angela.
If I, if it's okay.
Angela Charles, there you go. Yes, please, Superintendent McLean, go ahead.
Chairperson Lance, I wanted to just clarify a.
Did we just lose her?
I think we did. She will be rejoining as an attendee, so let me get her.
So.
Let me get her back in here.
Councilmember Paula, please, go ahead.
I just lost.
Okay.
I I just wanted to say, you know, in defense of our city attorney's office, they're not there to be negative or take a role. They're there to advise us on the law. And the law is really mixed right now. We're we're struggling through a lot of legal issues, not only legislative but case law. And I I just want your people in the audience to understand the city attorney only calling it the way the law lays it out. It's definitely not a personal thing. And I want to make sure people understand we we need that because a lot of cities have lost a lot of money by doing the popular thing, not the legal thing. And nobody wins. In fact, the community loses. So it's important, and I I just want to emphasize it's only advice and it's that we take seriously. But the city still can move forward in any direction they want to, and they take that risk. So I just wanted to say for the community and thank our city attorney's office. They do a good job for us, and I wanted to say that publicly. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Superintendent McLean, you're back. Please go ahead and respond like you wanted.
Thank you. I wanted to just address a couple of concerns. And I agree, Councilmember Paula, I think we're a school district, and so we're focused on law that impacts our district. A city attorney is dealing with a much broader scope. So our goal is to help provide support for that and make sure you have a clear understanding of the legal basis so that the city, you know, we we don't want the city to be put at risk. So I, you know, this is, I I totally relate because we've been asked to act as medical professionals over the past year and a half, and we're educators, and I feel like I'm totally out of my lane. However, it's part of our, you know, our our job, and it's written into our job that we do these things under emergency conditions. So we we want to provide some of that expertise and be able to give the city's, the city attorney direction so that the the city's attorney can validate what we're, you know, claiming and what we're asking for. And so it's a partnership. So we have a property that we purchased, knowing that we might need to build another facility. We are going to have the the CDE, the California Department of Education, come and do a walk of that facility. There are requirements, including, you know, safety requirements. There are so many things that go into building a school, and your site actually has to qualify for it, which is one of the reasons why we're not going to lose a field. If anything, we're going to build more fields. And nothing, absolutely nothing is going to happen without a process. But as we confront this issue of transitional kindergarten and also trying to get kids out of old rundown portable buildings, we're looking at all different kinds of configurations. So it could be that we move other grade levels. We're trying to do it in a way that is the best for kids and the community instead of hap- in a haphazard manner. Really, none of the things that were presented tonight, any of the, you know, the possibilities of reorganizing fields and putting them in other places or building facilities. I think what they need, really what they do is they serve to illustrate the problem solving we're trying to do. You know, could we do this? Could we do this? Could we do this? Nothing is going to happen is as Jen described, this takes years. So this is part of why we have to get out in front of it now. Because really, to build a new facility is a minimum of five years, but realistically, it's more than that, right? That's the actual design and construction. There's all that front end work that we're talking about. So what, seven years? And and that, when you look at the scope of development in our community, we don't have seven years. So we feel that sense of urgency, but I don't want anyone to worry about are we configuring campuses without community input, without a process? I'm relatively new to Cloverdale, you know, after a year and a half. And I think that before you touch anything, you have to really understand the importance of things like, you know, a particular baseball field, it's our Little League field, and the history behind it and who it's named after. And and not only that, who has access within walking distance, right? So one of the things that's really critical about the Jefferson campus is it's in a residential neighborhood, and we do have a traffic congestion problem. But it's accessible by foot, right? So you could buy a property on the south end of town as we have, but but kids can't walk there easily. So that issue of of safe routes to school, parent, you know, traffic, you know, you know, egress, if there's an emergency like a fire, all those kinds of things affect the siting of a school. And I think it's, none of these things can happen casually. So the South property right now, we don't even know if we could build a campus there. And we will know, we may be able to build facilities there that would free up space on another campus, like moving maintenance and operations to the South property and then freeing, thereby freeing up space at the high school for, you know, adding buildings. There are all these different things we have to consider. So so we will be having a site visit from the CDE, Jen, that's coming up sometime in the next couple of months?
Yeah, sooner than that, in the next month.
And they'll visit our other facilities too, which will help us, you know, kind of get a handle on what what funding resources are accessible immediately through the CDE, you know, for them to actually see how limited, you know, we can't expand. You know, if you're in other communities, often, you know, your your schools are adjacent to open space. And and, you know, if you need to, or the potentially, like, the scale, the acreage of the campus afford to you some flexibility with new construction, we don't have that.
Thank you, Superintendent. Anyone else? Any other hands in the attendees? Thank you, Yvonne. So Beth, one of the questions that has been asked in the past for the past couple of years is, why would a school district not want children? Why would they not want to grow? And you've given a a good presentation of it, but I I want the real quick answer. I mean, you get a certain amount of money, say, right now, I I think it's around twelve thousand dollars ADA. You know, that's money per child. I don't, I don't know. I haven't been there in a while. It's right around that number. How much of that money at the end of the year do you have left over to put towards a new a new school?
There's, you know, especially with trying to pay a competitive wage to all of our employees, very, very little. We put, we are obligated to set aside funding for essentially rainy day. You know, we have a reserve that is mandated by the state. We have a board approved reserve. We have other set asides that, you know, we have to anticipate, like now there are pretty significant technology costs that we have to anticipate annually. We put in a stadium with a track and field, our football stadium, or track and field and football stadium. I was a runner, so I have to say track. And that is going to cost quite a bit to resurface, probably every ten years. And we have to anticipate and set aside funds for that. We have, there are any number of things that that we have to set aside for deferred maintenance, like roofing and other things that come up, plumbing emergencies, all kinds of things that you don't necessarily see coming, as well as those things that you know in five years, we're going to need to renovate those bathrooms or in the next three years. It's, so with all of that said, in answer to your question, we have very little funding to set aside. I would say none. Because what we're spending money on is deferred maintenance and and trying to sustain programs. And there's nothing, you know, schools don't get funding embedded in their annual budget for facility for construction. It's just not part of the way that we're funded. So I hope that that, you know, we want enrollment. I think the thing we really, I really want to stress tonight is that we, I think, increased enrollment allows us to do more with our students, to do more for our students and families. It gives us more flexibility. However, we want to safely and adequately house them. And beyond that, I will say, I want twenty-first century classrooms, not twenty-year-old crummy portables for the students of our community. I want every child to graduate from our schools with a sense of agency and possibility. And I don't, you know, I think facilities have a part in that. And when you think about what an adjacent community like Hillsburg can do for students because of their tax basis and because, you know, of their bonding capacity compared to what we can do, I think it's really important that developers contribute their fair share. And 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 we will, we will welcome students. So we are, we are not against increased enrollment or development at all.
Thank you. I don't see any other hands from anyone. I think all the questions that we've had at this point have been answered. I think, and I think the greatest takeaway is Alex and Anne meeting so that we can get some solid answers about what we can do as a city to work together. Because, you know, like I've asked the superintendent or anyone else the whole time, show us where it says the will serve and all that, because we'd love to see it in writing. And and, you know, obviously, it probably doesn't exist in California. It's just something that we have to figure out how it works. And I know, Anne, you're probably the best from Los Alamos Smith to do it, so. I appreciate that. Last chance, I see one more hand, and the attendees just popped up.
Okay, Matthew, if you unmute yourself. I'm sorry. Okay, Matthew, you're able to speak.
Okay, am I on there?
Yes.
Matthew.
Okay, so my big question, after hearing all this, is obviously this new development is probably going to be built and occupied before the school can expand because of all the restrictions in expanding the schools. So how do we address that? Because if we have all these new people coming, how can we do it with the schools the way they are if we can't expand fast enough in the school to accommodate? And I'll leave it at that.
Matthew, I think that's the million dollar question, or twenty-four million dollar question at this point. And that's where we're trying to put our heads together. So I appreciate your question and your concerns, Matthew. Anyone else? Last chance. Okay, well, let me get back onto our agenda so I can do it exactly how we want it here. That solved all of four A and B with that conversation for sure. I know we hit every topic that everyone wanted. So, anything good for the order? I'd like to thank everyone that's here, Alex, Jennifer, Anne, Beth, everybody that's been involved in this and working so hard to do what's best for our town and our kids. I appreciate it. And I look forward to working together as a partnership with this. And, uh, our next meeting, hopefully we can have some answers and good discussion is set for, as of now, tentatively, and if I'm wrong, Superintendent, January seventeenth, five P M.
I believe that's a holiday. That's why I was waving my hand at you, Todd.
And that's why I was, I saw your hand. I'm not sure, so.
I think we, we are going to need to reschedule that meeting. Um, so we will, you know, we'll go through the process of rescheduling it and, and posting it. Um, but I think it is as yet to be determined. We're hoping, uh, at some point in January or early February. Typically, it's the third Monday, uh, every quarter, I believe, right?
Every other, I believe.
Yeah.
Okay, so perfect. Then we will, uh, have a TBD on that date and we'll get it out as soon as we possibly can. It's just, and one more thing, Superintendent or, or Jennifer, can I get a copy of your presentation that you gave? Can you send it out to the emails of everyone?
I will send that document out and I'll, and I'll follow, also send out the letter to the planning commission just so some of the steps are outlined there.
All right. Well, thank you all so much and go home, have dinner and have a great night.
Thank you, buddy.